No, I saw him commenting on Eric's post and so I I exchanged a couple of messages with him. For a couple of weeks ago.
There's only two pictures of him, you see it? And he doesn't have very many friends, I don't know if it's a scam or what it is.
I don't know. I mean, I did exchange messages with him directly, so it was somebody responding in a reasonable amount of time. If it's actually him or someone else, I don't know.
It is.
No clue.
And then there's a railroad track. There's just a single pole. There's no bench, there's no nothing, there's no shade. If you drive, you drive further. At the flea market, there's an actual shelter, yeah.
Yeah, so then I saw, I saw this one, they did one out here at the alleyway.
Okay.
So I just, I didn't look at the dominant thing on the Walmart one.
Andrew, how old are you? You're fifty-five now, you can go get a shot.
One of these days.
About twenty years.
Was that real? Was that the real thing that I heard or saw that April fifth is supposed to go to, April fifth it goes eighteen and up?
Yes.
You guys have already done this, I don't want to. Right, the day before my birthday, then I'll go stick it.
Yeah, of course, yeah, yeah. And I actually. Yeah, so I'm like, why don't we?
I was speaking your language.
Like, that's it. It's like, there aren't that many streets. In Commerce, I used to, I'd run down Commerce.
Yeah.
When I was over at the Municipal Services Complex. So I think most of that sheath.
Yeah.
I remember being in the place, but, um, for some.
You should go quick, do whatever.
There's, there's cheese, there's gin there.
There's Fritos over there, too. I can demolish a full bag of Fritos, no problem.
Like going to the gym, though.
Yeah. Calm down, I just go on the scale and I was like, not too bad. Thought it was gonna be a lot worse, but, so, frame with you and move on.
There you go. How are you? Are we streaming this? Transparency. All good? Maybe you look good.
I don't know about that part, that's just your redundant thing, you're still. Kind of recording to happen, that just tells us to be done.
You have hair. Where the cool kids sit in?
The bad kids sit over there. Troublemakers.
Shadows.
I'd like to call this Thursday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, meeting of the Osmar City Council to order. We are having a workshop today regarding the ordinance review committee's recommendations. The next two items on the agenda are, is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by our city attorney, Mr. Tom Trask. Everybody could please rise. I'd ask that before we be, uh, before the city attorney begins, that we observe a moment of silent meditation for those uh, who were lost in the tragedies in Atlanta and also out in Boulder. Thank you. Tom?
Heavenly Father, we pray that you guide us as always, satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting, strengthen us as we make tough decisions, guide us to be effective and decisive, so that this meeting will be productive. This we pray, amen.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Before we continue on, I just want to mention that we are practicing the CDC guidelines. And so for those of you who are uh, at home, uh, but mostly for those of you who are here in the audience, we ask you to keep your mask on. Unless you're speaking at the podium, then you can remove it. Up here, we're spread out, as you can see. And we do a lot of talking, so we take the mask off and we leave it there. The next item on the agenda is the citizens' open forum. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? I will start on this side of the room. No? No? So I, I'm going to recognize, we have a special guest in the audience, and that is, uh, former mayor, Mayor Beaverlin.
Aren't we allowed to speak later?
No.
No.
I'm not?
No. But in that case. Well, I've just stopped.
I'm not used to this game.
I can take this off?
You can take it off, and for the record, please state your name and address, sir.
Uh, Jerry Beaverlin, five twelve Pine Avenue South, the city of Osmar, fifty-six years.
Fifty-six.
And loving every one of it.
And we're loving it too.
Uh, since the, uh, city attorney and the city, uh, mayor told me I can't speak at this, other than at the, at the time I, I'm, I'm up here. How long do I have? As long as I want?
Uh, you, you have three minutes, but I'm gonna give you five because of your.
Thank you. Counsel, congratulations.
Thank you.
You have just now begun to get it. Uh, I, I gave the advice to, to the mayor when he ran before.
You want me to repeat it?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Would you repeat that advice?
When I first got elected to council, I had the privilege of serving, uh, with Mayor Beaverlin, uh, for a short period of time. And he said, I want to give you some advice while you're new on council, and I said, what's that? He goes, for the first year? And I'm repeating, repeating him, shut up. That's what he told me to do. And so, um, I tried my best, but I don't know that it worked too well, but it was good advice.
No, the first year you, the first year you learn, you, you don't know a whole lot. So you learn, and by the fifth month or fourth month, maybe the eighth month, you start to learn what's going on up here, and that's when you can open your mouth. Other than that, keep your mouth closed. The, uh, the only thing I want to talk about is that you're talking about increasing in the pay for the council. Oh, I, I just want to tell you that I've been on council for twenty-nine years. When I ran the first time, I knew I'd get a dollar a year, which I didn't get. It took about ten more years, no, fifteen more years to finally, Babe Bright gave me my two silver, my three silver, my four silver dollars. I ran because I wanted to serve the citizens of Osmar. I didn't run for the money, and I don't think any of you all have run for the money. But if you want to pay, that's fine, or be paid. When I ran in nineteen ninety, it was still a dollar a year. And I ran, I wanted to be on council, because the city had been, in my opinion, wasn't doing what it was supposed to be doing, so I ran, knowing I wouldn't win. I knew I wouldn't win. I was running against an incumbent, and that was rough. I got sixty-four percent of the vote, which really blew me away. One of the first things that came up on the council was to pay the council a salary. Alright, I didn't run for that. So when it came up to vote, it was three to two to pay the council. The two votes against it was Dottie Lee and myself. I felt like it was a privilege, it was, it was an honor for me to serve this, this people, the city of Osmar. It was okay for the pay. I didn't have a problem with that, except for me. Now, we, I think it's still the same, if, i- if you increase the pay, it goes to the next council, right?
Correct.
So I worked for a dollar a year. Again, which was fine with me. Now, I've looked at what the increase has been suggested. I'm gonna ask you, everyone have a question? You've been on there enough, you've been on there. Which one of you thinks you're overworked? The only person that really does something, uh, uh, up and beyond is the mayor. When I was mayor for ten years, I made, I, and I could afford it. I could do it because I didn't have a job. I made it a full-time job, and that's fine. I loved every bit of it. And I loved it when I was on council. Since you're not overworked, and if you're really honest with me, are you at sales? When you come to a council meeting, most everything is already done for you. City manager, the staff, they've already laid it out. They've already done all the work. What you have to do is determine if the work they've done is what you want. If you want to, i- if you want to examine something, or, um, which is, which is very odd, it doesn't usually happen. I mean, you may go to an event here, an event there, an event there, you don't have to. And, uh, I was in the League of Cities when I fir- I was first elected as mayor. I couldn't go into the League of Cities, sorry about that. It became polit- political to me. This guy here was put up for the Attorney of the Year. And by then, they gave it to some hick down in South Florida that always got it, which turned me against the League of Cities. It was, it was political. Same with the city manager. Anyway, you don't have to go to anything like that. You go to, uh, Osmar Days, and that's fine. So is everybody else. If you're gonna make a pay raise, forgive me for this, don't go to what you, they proposed. To me, that's ridiculous, and, and you can't, you can't, uh, compare yourself to St. Petersburg, Safety Harbor, or anybody else. This is Osmar. Osmar, quit comparing yourself to everybody else. Osmar takes the lead in a lot of things. And that's because of people like you, the people that have gone before you. Osmar, in my opinion, is number one in almost everything. Who wants to move to another city in this Pinehurst County? I lived in Pinehurst County since nineteen forty-eight. As Doug would say, I'm older than dirt. I guess Andrew would probably say that too, but and, and, and I would, I, I would accept that. The pay raise is ridiculous. Totally ridiculous. I will stand a vote, I'll make a motion to cancel. But if somebody wants to have a pay raise, remember it goes to the next council. Don't make them happy. If you want to serve the city of Osmar, you do it from here and from here. I've always done it because I love the city and the people in it. That's why I served. Anyway, it's gonna be y'all's decision. I don't get a vote unless y'all want to make a motion that I get a vote. Y'all, thank you for being on council. Thank you for serving for this beautiful city.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, is there anybody else who has any other, uh, comments from the, uh, citizens, for the citizens' open forum? Alright, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the citizens' open forum and move into, uh, matter at hand. So, uh, I've spent some time talking with our city attorney and also with our city manager and, uh, assistant city manager, talking about a good approach to this. I want to start off by once again, and I think everybody up here, uh, agrees with this, and that is thanking the ordinance review committee for all the work that they put into this. They had collectively, what was it? I think eight meetings. And they spent over ten and a half hours in those meetings. So think of it this way, our meetings, our, our council meetings run about an hour, give or take. That's like almost, I think, I think they had ten meetings. It was ten meetings. And, uh, so that's like us having five months worth of meetings, is what they put into this. And I mention that because, as everybody knows up here, the process to make a modification, any kind of change or create a new ordinance is a two-step process, right? We in this group here today will, will not approve anything, right? So it'll be an opportunity to make some progress on the seventy-two pages that we have before us, right? But this is a housekeeping, as much as it is, uh, some new concepts that I think makes sense. We, we do this over a period of time. Uh, we're not gonna try to load everything all into once, uh, in part because think of it this way, even the items that we all agree on one hundred percent, let's just grab a number, there's thirty of them, let's say, right? Every one of those have to go through two readings. They still have to be voted on on council. And so, I mean, that alone, on what the stuff we agree on, the things we don't agree on, that's obvi- obviously gonna take more time, as it should. Uh, also, uh, for our citizens, every one of these items, by going through the ordinance process, gives them the opportunity to know what's being voted on, even if they miss the notification first, they hear the first discussion. They could come and participate, uh, under the citizens' open forum before the second and final vote. So my point to that is, uh, if it's the pleasure of the council, the kind of collective thought was, today what we would try to accomplish, as much as we can, um, and that is that we try to get consensus. Let's identify those items that we have a consensus on. And, uh, that's really all we hope to accomplish today. I'm not even convinced we'll get through all of what we have a con- consensus on, because we literally have to go page by page, okay? And so, and it's okay if we don't have it all finished, even on the consensus side. Why? Because it will at least allow the city staff and the city attorney to start the process on what we have a consensus on. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
So, so what I'm gonna do is I, I'm gonna go through this and, and go, um, let's just open up to, to page four. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna say, uh, recommendations, we're on page four. Chapter one, recommendation to zero one point zero one, add life, estate language to the owner's definition. I'm gonna say this. Do we have a consensus that we wish to move forward with that change? Show of hands. Okay? Alright, so then that goes on the list, and we go on to the next one. Now, if nobody raises their hand, that's a consensus too. That means we, we leave it on the table. We're not gonna take it off for discussion at a council meeting. Okay? Because remember, we're not obligated to take action on these items. And we could choose to walk away from the whole report. I mean, I don't, I don't think we should, but that's, my point is, so we have a consensus that we don't want to take action on an item, and I say, a show of hands, we have a consensus on item number two point two. And nobody raises their hands, I'm gonna look, and then we're gonna move on to the next one, right? It's, we have a consensus that we don't want to do anything with it. Now, I would like, if it's, um, the pleasure of the council, to approach this, as you know, we've kind of gone through a process on this, where we have the ordinance review committee's recommendations. And then if you'll recall, we asked the city manager's office to go look at these and make amendments. So what I'm going to do, unless there's any objection, I'm gonna operate that most, well, let me ask the question. Is there anybody who has any objection, not necessarily to the recommended change, but any objection to any of the amendments that were made by the city manager?
No, only typographical.
Only typographical.
Should not surprise you.
Which?
Which I als- I also did notice, yes, but that's.
The two law- oh, you know, we have two lawyers on council now.
Nothing substantial, but reason.
Wow.
I think reasonable should be reasonably somewhere.
Okay, well, well, okay, you, maybe you point that out as we go on. And, and the reason I ask that question, because let me just say this, what I would do, for example, um, and I will use, um, uh, recommendation zero two point zero two, and say, um, does everybody, is there a consensus to move forward this as amended by the city, uh, manager's office? So we just incorporate that, right? So we don't go both steps, we're just gonna incorporate it, and that way we can just kind of go through the process.
Just, just as amended by whatever entity?
Correct, as amended. Uh, that's a good way to put it, okay.
Mayor, just as clarification, if we don't have a consensus, we don't raise our hands, it's, it's because somebody doesn't want to move forward.
Correct. So if I say, because my, my question's gonna be to move forward with it. Move forward means bring it to council for a vote, right? Do we have a consensus to move forward with this? Raise a hand. If only, um, one person raises their hand, that they want to move forward, it's going to go into another pile.
Okay.
Which means, um, it's still gonna come to the council. It just means it's gonna get agendas differently, right? Because we're gonna have their report, we have to vote on it, right? So if there is someone who wants to move forward with something, it will ultimately end up on an agenda item as a recommendation that we then take action on and debate and vote down, which if it's one person wanting to move forward, it doesn't sound very promising for it, but at that point, that's essentially what we would do. Makes sense? Yes.
Question. Um, so if we get unanimous consent on any of these items, is that in essence directing the city attorney to draft the ordinance at that time, or is it that, that, that then at the next meeting, or a subsequent meeting, is then we would vote on the city attorney to draft the ordinance?
Correct. What we would do is, at this point, we would have a list of all the items in here that we've, we've, by consensus agreed, uh, that we want to take action on. So we know that. So the city attorney, that's where we're gonna start with those items, right? So then, and, and this is a question for our city attorney, because we didn't discuss this. Let's just use that example that we have thirty items that we have consensus that we want to move forward in taking action on. Does that mean at the first meeting that, uh, we are agended that we will do one ordinance that encompasses all thirty? We can't do that, can we?
No, we can't do it.
Okay. So, so what I would say is that we're, what we discussed was, we're probably gonna take a few at a time. Right? Because there, there's no fire. Now, what I have, yeah, I mean, otherwise, we're gonna have meetings that are completely full of doing ordinance reviews, even full of ordinance reviews that we all agree on, right?
Yeah.
So it's not gonna really be productive. So we're gonna take our time. Like I said, if we did nothing but this, and we put the same time into it that the ordinance review committee did, it'd be five months worth of meetings for us. Alright, I mean, just to give some perspective. The other thing that I did say, and I hope it's, uh, you, you know, the indulgence of, of, of the council, I did make it clear to the city manager that if, if there is something in these recommendations that he and the staff feel are time-sensitive, are an issue, that certainly, that we would ask, uh, and give the indulgence for that to be brought forward much quicker.
Sure.
Right? So, whatever that might be. Alright. We all good with that?
Good to go.
Alright, let's get.
That first vote didn't count, then?
That first vote didn't knock it, that was, it was a good run-through. So if you have stuff.
We start from the back.
I didn't want to start from the back.
You know, just to see.
No. You're just trying to mess me up. Alright, alright, so, uh, chapter one, recommendation zero one point zero one. Uh, I'm not gonna read it all, if that's okay. Everyone good with that? But I will read the number. That work? Okay. Uh, recommendation zero one point zero one. Is there a consensus to move forward with that change? Show of hands. We do have a consensus? Okay. Recommendation zero two point zero one. Is there a consensus to move forward with that? Show of hands. Okay, we're gonna leave it on the table. There'll be no, uh, voting on, uh, increasing pay. Okay, just so you know, uh, Mayor. Must have been that speech. Zero one point zero two. Is there a consensus to move forward with that? Show of hands?
Zero two, zero two.
Zero two.
Zero two, zero two? We have a consensus. Page five. Page. Sorry. Page five, uh, recommendation, uh, zero two point zero three. Is there a consensus to move forward with that? We have a consensus? Uh, zero two point zero four. Do we have a consensus? We have a consensus? Chapter six, no recommendations. Chapter ten, um, one zero point zero one. Do we have a consensus to move forward with that? Uh, one zero point zero two. Do we have a consensus to move forward with that? Uh, section. Where's the recommendation number? That whole thing was a recommendation. Okay. Uh, recommendation, uh, one zero point zero three?
Human trafficking?
Uh, yes. Uh, one zero point zero three. Is there a mo- a recommendation to move forward with that? Okay, we do not have a consensus? Yes.
It, are you referring to consensus as being unanimous?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it would have to be unanimous, otherwise it needs to be brought. It, it's, all that's gonna come forward anyhow, it just will be separated out from what we already all agreed on, okay?
So we don't have a consensus?
We do not have a consensus on, uh, one zero point zero three, take a stronger stance on the prevention of human trafficking. That was the item number. Alright. Alright, chapter fourteen, uh, recommendation one four point zero one. We have a consensus? We do have a consensus.
Thank you.
I do? Um, excuse me, Mayor?
Yeah. So that includes pages seven, eight.
Or seventy-nine.
Councilman? I did, it, it was a typographical thing, and that was thought, I don't know if we were doing that or not.
Yes, please.
Yeah, if there's a typo, maybe while we're going through it, but absolutely.
Um, on page nine, section fourteen, point thirty-five, um, subsection, the new subsection A, um, subsect, paragraph four, just needs a period, sorry. Semi-colon, 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 period.
In the blue, blue text, right?
That's right.
The last item four.
A four, period.
Right, right, A four, okay.
Right, and keep in mind, this is all as amended, as we agreed, okay? I've not said that, and I realize that just now, but for the record, that this is all as amended.
It's as amended, yes.
Thank you. I'm checking off all my, my objections.
There's no period at the end of, uh, paragraph four. Blue subsection.
Other funds allocated.
There you go. Just to help Tom, so that he's not searching for where we said there's typographical errors.
Very good, moving on. Chapter eighteen, uh, recommendation eighteen point zero one. Do we have a consensus to move forward with? We do. Eighteen point zero two. Do we have a consensus to move forward with? We do. Eighteen point zero three. Do we have a consensus to move forward with? Eighteen-point-zero-three, do we have a consensus to move forward with? We do. Do we?
Yep.
Okay. Chapter twenty-two, recommendation twenty-two-point-zero-one.
I, I had just a comment on the language.
Go right ahead.
It says, if the death withdrawal removal from the ballot of a qualified candidate following the end of the qualifying period but before the election results in no candidates for an office, then in that event, upon the seat being officially vacated. So if it's a candidate who's no longer qualified, they wouldn't be in a seat. And so, I didn't think that language was necessary, and I was wondering if we would take it out, or reword it. Because I think we were borrowing the language to clean it up, because we were talking about the vacation of a city council seat, and that was the reason why we wanted the change, to make the process more streamlined. But if we're not talking about the vacation of a city council seat, we're talking about no longer qualified candidate, or someone who's withdrawn.
I think a suggestion, because we might have a few of these where there's some discussion as it relates to the wording of something, that we move that out of the consensus, so we take it as an item that we want to take individually? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not, twenty-two-point-zero-one, we're not moving forward as a consensus, it still will come to council. All right, so maybe that's the best way to handle it.
Sure.
So that way, we can keep going and try to get through as much as we can. All right, recommendation twenty-six-point-zero-one, on chapter twenty-six. Do we have a consensus to move forward? We do. Twenty-six-point-zero-two, do we have a consensus? We do. Twenty-six-point-zero-three, do we have a consensus? We do. Twenty-six-point-zero-four, do we have a consensus? We do. Twenty-six-point-zero-five, do we have a consensus? Let's put it page. You know what? I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going to, I had some questions on that, so I'm going to pull my consensus on that, so we don't. Which is twenty-six-point-zero-five, restriction and guidelines.
Another discussion.
About the fires?
Yeah. Because I noticed that.
Burning?
Yeah, it, I, it's not necessarily an issue, but it is some discussion, so I'm going to pull that aside, okay? Good with that, all right. Recommendation twenty-six-point-zero-six, do we have a consensus? Twenty-six-point-zero-seven, do we have a consensus? We do. Twenty-six-point-zero-eight, do we have a consensus? Twenty-six-point-zero-nine, do we have a consensus? We do.
Yeah, I, I, I held it back, only because I just wanted to be sure.
Go ahead.
Is that to the leisure services department? Or is that going to come from the city manager? Because there was a consistent change throughout the documents that the city manager would take, so just in terms of the specific trees, I'm talking about twenty-six-point-zero-nine, without written permission of the leisure services department. I just wanted to be sure, because I was noticing it throughout the document.
That's a good point, and it's silent on the matter, but I would assume. City manager, any comment?
I would assume that we missed it, and it should be coming from me. I would rely on them to provide it to me, to go through you.
Okay.
But I, I think we just missed that, because it didn't name a department director. It was just information from the department itself. But I'd be willing to handle it however the council wants on that.
Okay, then why don't we do this, since that's a pretty easy one? Why don't we say that there's a consensus with it being amended to read?
As the other ones do.
As the others do, yeah. City manager or designate? Is that good?
Yeah.
About acceptable? All right, so that was twenty-six-point-zero-nine, as amended, page fourteen, page fifteen. Twenty-six-point-zero-one. Do we have a consensus on this?
You said zero-one, did you mean?
One-zero, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a consensus? We do not have a consensus. Okay, all right, so, that goes in the other list, twenty-six-point-eleven.
Who, who didn't?
Who did?
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't, I didn't.
I had some question on it, is what it did.
I just didn't, I thought you were going to go down.
Yeah, no, I, I had an itch, is what it was. Cost me a lot of money in an auction one time, but. All right, twenty-six-point-eleven, do we have a consensus?
I had the same issue with the leisure services in twenty-six-point-one-two-seven. This says leisure services department.
Twenty-six-point what?
So if it's twenty-six-point-one-one, and section.
Oh, so the section, not the recommendation, okay.
The leisure services, is that to the city manager?
Are you okay if we do the same amendment?
Yeah, can we do, can we do that as amended? Make an amendment to it, as it is the city manager designated, we agree with that?
Yep.
So we have a consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, where are we at, twenty-six-point-one-two, do we have a consensus? Okay, twenty-six-point-one-three, do we have a consensus? Was there a spelling typo or something, I saw the way you were looking over there.
Well, I just looked over, because I was curious if Steve was going to make the same statement about the parks, I'm sorry, the leisure services department to notify the owner of such trees.
I had a general note, and so I didn't put another asterisk or anything next to that, but yes, I would make that same comment.
Well, maybe it'd be a good question of the city manager, then.
I would take a different approach to that one, because that's a notice.
It's a notification.
The other is a discretion, a recall, that I would try and protect my department heads, but making sure the responsibility is mine.
Then I have consensus with twenty-six-point-one-three.
Very good. Trying to catch up on my own, all right, twenty-six-point-one-four, do we have a consensus?
There's one spelling error.
Go right ahead.
It's a camphor tree, C-A-M-P-H-O-R, on the left-hand side, the first blue addition.
Man.
Record, we noted that the committee did that, not the city staff.
Certainly, certainly.
You wanted to know if we read it, I read it.
I just, I just had, I had a scary thought for a moment, I was just thinking about the benefit we're getting here, and not getting the hourly rate of two attorneys on this. Pretty good. All right, moving along, item number twenty-six-point-one-five, do we have a consensus? We do not? Okay, so that goes in the other pile. Chapter, page seventeen, page thirty, chapter, excuse me, page seventeen, chapter thirty. Thirty-point-zero-one, do we have a consensus? Thirty-point-zero-two, do we have a consensus? Chapter thirty-four, recommendation thirty-four-point-zero-one, do we have a consensus? Chapter, chapter thirty-eight, page eighteen, recommendation thirty-eight-point-zero-one? Consensus? All right. Where are we on here, page nineteen? Okay, chapter thirty-nine, recommendation thirty-nine-point-zero-one, do we have a consensus? All right. Let's see, chapter, excuse me, page twenty, thirty-nine-point-zero-two, do we have a consensus? Okay. Page twenty, chapter forty-two, recommendation forty-two-point-zero-one, do we have a consensus? We do. Page twenty-one, recommendation forty-two-point-zero-two, do we have a consensus? Recommendation forty-two-point-zero-three, do we have a consensus?
Take zero-three or five?
Zero-three?
Three.
Page twenty-one?
Oh, yes, okay.
Yes, 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 yes? Any comment?
I got a question, though, it seems, you know, like forty-two-point-zero-two, it was out of definition, and then the, the back part of forty-two-oh-one also was out of definition, but that was lumped in with, like, the definitions on the prior page, so does that need to be a separate one, or? Or should forty-two-oh-two also really be combined with forty-two-oh-one? Because it's the same section under definitions.
They're just separate recommendations, that's why they're numbered forty-two-point-oh-one.
All.
But they're all going to definitions.
They're all going to section forty-two dash thirty-one.
One, right.
So that might be something that can be lumped into one ordinance change, because it's.
I'm sure it would be, wouldn't it? Yeah.
They'll all change.
Yeah, because it's all one section.
Okay.
That's a good question, though.
Even oh-three, I think, is, again, definitions?
Yeah, they're all.
And so is.
Separate recommendations.
Four, okay, forty-two, we're at forty-two-point-zero-four, correct? Okay, do we have a consensus? Forty-two-point-zero-five, on page twenty-two, do we have a consensus? Twenty-two, this goes. Do we have a consensus? Okay. Forty-two-point-zero-six, do we have a consensus? Going back and forth, reading my own notes. Bear with me, all right. Recommendation forty-two-point-zero-seven, do we have a consensus? Okay, we have a consensus? Page twenty-three. I'm sorry. Go back, we're at forty-two-point-zero-seven on twenty-two? Okay, we do not have a consensus on that.
Forty-two-oh-seven?
That is correct. All right, so we're going to go on to forty-two-point-zero-eight? Do we have a consensus? We do not? And I think a lot of these are ones we just have discussion on, probably, you know? But, like I said, let's, let's do some heavy lifting here. Which, I think, how many, how many do we have a consensus on so far? Do you know?
Oh, I'm just marking them as a go, I don't know.
No one's counting?
I haven't been keeping track. More than fifty percent.
Mayor.
What?
More than fifty percent.
So, so mayor, a question.
Sure.
Excuse me, forty-two-oh-eight and forty-two-oh-seven, we do not have consensus, correct?
Correct.
Forty-two-oh-seven and forty-two-oh-eight.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. That is correct. See, I believe we're on page twenty-five, recommendation forty-two. Forty-two-point-zero-nine. Do we have consensus? We do not, okay? And that goes all the way to page twenty-seven, where we have forty-two-point-zero-one.
One-zero?
One-zero.
Sorry, one-zero. I'm reading my, my sheet, and this at the time, do we have a consensus? We do have a consensus. Forty-two-eleven, do we have consensus? We do. Forty-two-point-one-two, do we have consensus? We do not have consensus. Let's see here, page twenty-nine, forty-two-point-one-three, do we have consensus? Yes? Okay, we have consensus, you know, it's funny to me, I'm, I'm watching, I'm watching the, the new council member over there, and he served on this committee, and he's like, oh, wait, I don't remember if I like that or not, so.
Which chapter did you do?
What chapter, it's all right, yeah, what chapter did you do, by the way?
I was told not to say anything, but former mayor Beberlin, so.
I'm going to remind him of that.
I'm just learning.
I think we all will up here, like, hey, what are you doing, talking? All right.
I did, I did lots of them, but.
Yeah, you did lots of them, all right. We are on page twenty-nine, forty-two-point-one-four, do we have consensus? We do. All right, we're on page thirty. We're on page thirty, recommendation forty-two-point-one-five, do we have consensus? Forty-two-point-one-six, do we have consensus?
Sorry, mayor, one-five?
Yes.
Did you raise your hand?
I did, I did. Forty-two-point-one-six, do we have consensus? Andrew, you can put your hand up there, come on, man, you're getting a little lazy on it, sir, there. Commit to it. Page thirty-one, forty-two-point-one-seven, do we have consensus? Let's see, forty-two-point-one-eight, do we have consensus?
I had the same issue with city manager or designate?
Okay.
In the blue, where it says.
Permission by, granted by the department.
Correct, or permission is granted by the department.
Okay, can we, city manager?
I would say we missed that, I apologize, and I would ask that we amend it.
Okay, so, let's.
As amended.
As, let's just say that we've amended the amendment to, say, city manager or designate, do we have a consensus? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number forty, recommendation forty-two-point-one-nine? We do not have consensus. Page thirty-two. Excuse me, I'm sorry, page thirty-two, item number, recommendation forty-two-point-two-zero, do we have consensus? We have consensus? Forty-two-point-two-one, do we have consensus? We do not have consensus? And that takes us to page thirty-four. All right. Item, recommendation number forty-two-point-two-two, do we have consensus?
Hold on, mayor, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm telling someone else.
Take your time.
I'm sorry.
Hey, we're, we're, we're crushing it.
Forty, forty-two-point-two-two?
Correct.
Yes.
Do we have consensus, let's do that again. Forty-two-point-two-two, do we have consensus? Very good. Forty-two-point-two-three, do we have consensus?
I had the same issue in subsections D and E, city manager or designate?
We don't have consensus on that either, anyhow, so, all right. I'm going to go on to.
The forty-two-point-two-three.
Yeah. I have some questions on it, it's not really an objection, but just to keep us rolling, it's something that we're going to have to bring it before us anyhow. Yeah, okay, all right, so we're on page thirty-five. We're on page thirty-five, item number forty-two-point-two-four, do we have consensus? We do not have consensus? Page thirty-six. Item, recommendation forty-two-point-two-five, do we have consensus? We do not have consensus? Forty-two-point-two-six. Do we have consensus? We do not have consensus? Forty-two-point-two-seven, do we have consensus? Yes, no? For the maybe?
Yes.
Okay, we have consensus.
I have one. In, on page thirty-seven. B-two. Says, release the animal alive in a place where it is not likely to endanger humans if reasonable possible.
Reasonably possible?
Reasonably.
Reasonably, you got the typo?
Yeah.
Good shape there, all right, excellent, thank you, sir. All right, item, recommendation number forty-two-point-two-eight, we in consensus?
So, excuse, I'm sorry, mayor, forty-two-point-two-seven, we were in consensus, hunting?
No, I don't think we were in consensus, were we? Oh, I'm sorry, we were in consensus on forty-two-point-two-seven, correct?
Seven, yes.
Okay, we were.
I'm sorry.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct for you, Pam?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, yes.
All right, page thirty-seven, item number, recommendation forty-two-point-two-eight, I know we're not in consensus?
Forty-two-point-two-eight.
Correct. All right, page thirty-eight, forty-two, recommendation forty-two-point-two-nine, are we in consensus? We are not? Forty-two-point-three-zero, are we in consent, consensus?
Same issue for me in new subsection B. It's on the top of page thirty-nine. No livestock or other farm animals are allowed within any city parks, except by department authorization. Does that need to be changed to city manager or designate?
I don't want that one. Yeah, I, but the same.
Does say horseback riding.
I know, I know.
Did you raise your hand?
Yep, you can have that one. No, I, yeah, it's.
No, I, yeah, it's, the point's well taken.
No, I didn't raise my hand. I did raise my hand, I think. Forty-two point three, uh, let me see. No.
So, four-two point three zero, no consensus. Correct? Forty-two point three zero?
No consensus.
Okay.
We're talking about horseback riding again?
It was a consensus, it's all I gotta cover for it. Do you wanna amend it to have it read, uh, city manager or designate me?
If that's council's pleasure, yes.
Okay, is that the council's pleasure?
Yes.
Alright, so by consensus, as amended, alright.
Forty-two point three is good.
It is.
As amended with the words city manager.
Thank you.
There's some word smithers up here, I'll tell you. Alright, page thirty-nine, moving on. Alright, page, uh, thirty-nine, recommendation four-two point one, excuse me, four-two point three-one, do we have a consensus? We have a consensus. Uh, recommendation four-two point three-two, do we have consensus? We have a consent, yes, we have a consensus? Do we have a spelling bee, what's going on?
In subsection A, uh, it says unless permission has been obtained by the department director or designate, should that be city manager or designate me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a recommendation, uh, if it's a pleasure to council, uh, in any one of these situations where it does not state, uh, city manager or their designate me, that, uh, we consider that to be amended and corrected before it's brought to us, is that okay with the city manager?
With, uh, grateful appreciation, so I don't look like a bigger idiot for having missed so many of them. Yes.
But I'm, 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 I'm trying to look after it.
Well, what I said, what my first note was, is there any way to state somewhere that city manager always can appoint a designate me or doesn't have to be stated each time?
I believe when we raise our hands, we will have just done that, is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
By consensus.
So.
Alright.
It was gonna be my first thought as we got going, so.
Yeah, well, so thank you though, because that makes that point, and then, uh, as they go through and prepare them, of course, they'll be able to identify those as they go, alright. Uh, recommendation forty-two point three-one, are we in consensus? We are in consensus, forty-two point three-two, are we in consensus? Forty-two point three-three, are we in consensus? Okay, moving on, page forty. Forty. Uh, recommendation forty-two point three-five, or, do we have a consensus?
Did we go by three, four?
Three, four.
Oh, I missed it, I'm sorry. Recommendation, uh, forty-two point three-four, do we have a consensus? Yes.
If I may, this one is one of the ones I consider to be very important.
Special events.
And in conversation with the council of a grade, where I think we might even need to clean it up more, um, I'd like to accelerate this to the front burner, however the council wants to do it. Partially because we've kinda descri, discovered a, I mean, the special events permitting process is pretty important to us anyway. I think we've discovered a need to maybe distinguish it depending on the exact circumstances with regard to fee waivers. So, I would say we need to probably enhance this wording even some more, um, be glad to do that coordination with council or however you wanna do it, but I consider this one to be very important.
Okay, alright, so why don't we do this, um, why don't, why don't we ask the city manager to make additional, um, amendments to it? Before, before it's brought to council? And that he can bring it to council, uh, as soon as he feels it's ready. Do we have an agreement on that up here? Alright, very good, does that work for you, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Excellent. Alright. Alright, um, recommendation four-two point three-five, do we have a consensus? We do. Uh, four-two point three-six, do we have a consensus? We do. Four-two point three-seven, do we have a consensus? Four-two point three-eight, do we have a consensus? We do. Four-two point three-nine, do we have a consensus? We do. Four-two point four-zero, do we have a consensus? And that is the recommendation, just as a reminder, that it goes away because we're preempted on it anyhow, right?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, page forty-two, uh, recommendation four-six point one-four. Wait.
Oh. Point oh-four?
Oh-four.
Oh-four.
They must've got rid of some, because they went to four instead of oh-one.
Yeah, well, change chapters. Uh, chapter forty-six, recommendation four-six point oh-four. Do we have a consensus? We do. Let's see, nothing in chapter fifty, fifty was good, it's a good chapter. Alright. Uh, recommendation five-four point oh-one, do we have a consensus? We do. Let's see, a question about cards. I'm gonna skip that, okay. Uh, recommendation five-four point zero-two, do we have a consensus? We do. Five-four zero-three, do we have a consensus? We do. Five-four point zero-four, do we have a consensus?
Playing your garbage can.
Wrong with that.
Right.
We do. Alright, uh, recommendation five-four point zero-five, do we have a consensus?
I didn't know we didn't have any alleys, that was news to me.
I know. Well, we do actually. We did, we did, we just got rid of them, right? No, there's an alley right here, right? Uh, okay, recommendation four-five point zero-six, do we have a consensus?
Five-four.
Five.
Five-four zero-six.
Yes.
Do we have a consensus? Uh, five-four point zero-seven, do we have a consensus? Five-four point zero-eight, do we have a consensus? We do, five-four point zero-nine, do we have a consensus? We do. Page forty-five. Five-four point one zero, do we have a consensus? Five-four point one-one, do we have a consensus? Five-four point one-two, do we have a consensus?
Mayor, excuse me. Um, this is the other one I consider to be most important, it's not necessarily in play and it's old, but, uh, the reason I requested our recommendation to make that, for us to continue the right to invoice an owner, has a lot to do with bad debt. The real estate lobby is very strong in Tallahassee, it's, statutorily, it's our choice to decide to bill tenants. Once we do, we can't go back against an owner for a bill until there's a bunch of restrictions and taking back possession, there's a bunch of rules to that. We always have had trouble over the years in situations where almost habitually some properties, which are rental properties, just always have tenants that never pay the bill. So, because we're statutorily allowed to decide not to agree to bill a tenant, I'd like to bring that forth now so that we maintain that right. We rarely use it, we can't use it now, but we, technically speaking, statutorily, it's always been authorized, it's just never been clear.
Okay. So you wanna bubble that to the top?
Yes, please.
Very good. Everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Alright. We don't even need a consensus, it's just a simple majority on that one, is that okay?
Alright.
Alright, where we're at, uh, five-four one-two?
That's, that's the one we were just discussing.
Alright, so we're on page fifty-six.
Eight point oh-one, I believe.
Recommendation fifty-eight point zero-one, are we in consensus?
Yes.
We have.
Who made that recommendation?
Excuse me?
Said, I don't know who made that recommendation.
Good job.
Really good one. Alright, recommendation five-eight point zero-two, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation five-eight point zero-three, do we have a consensus? We do, recommendation five-eight point zero-four, do we have a consensus? Recommendation five-eight point zero-five.
Do we wanna talk about that one?
Um, I'm gonna leave this one as is, I'm just.
Does include horses.
If I can say it sometimes.
Walk horses.
Feel it sometimes. Alright. Five-eight point zero-five, do we have a consensus? Damn it. And what does it say?
I'm not reading it.
Might be my last time. Alright, consen, uh, recommendation five-eight point zero-six, do we have a consensus?
Raise it up.
Raise it, alright. Alright, we are on page forty-eight. Alright, so recommendation five-eight point zero-seven, do we have a consensus? We do. Five-eight point zero-eight, do we have a consensus? We do. Five-eight point zero-nine, we do not have a consensus. Five-eight point one zero, do we have a consensus? Yes, we do, sorry. Page forty-nine. Uh, five-eight point one-one, do we have a consensus? We do. Five-eight point one-two, do we have a consensus? We do. Five-eight point one-three, do we have a consensus? We do. Uh, page fifty, five-eight point one-four, do we have a consensus? We do not. Five-eight point one-five, do we have a consensus?
I did have one question on that, is eight-one-one the only vendor?
I'm sorry?
For the vendor, for the utility locates? Because it said system locate vendors instead of Florida one call system locates, and I think that was one of NAN's recommendations when we were doing it, because you have to call.
I didn't hear you, Steve.
So you have to call eight-one-one before you dig? Is eight-one-one the only place that we can call, because it says system locates?
Most convenient as a utility, correct?
Multiple vendors.
It's not the only one, literally.
Okay, I just didn't, I didn't, I, I thought the eight-one-one, since it was one, in the guise of an emergency number, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, leave it vague.
Yeah, oh, sure, yeah.
Are you okay with that?
I had already consented, yes, I did.
Are you, are you okay though? Where's, where's Mayor Beaverland? Alright, uh, let's see, where we're at, uh, recommendation, yes?
To den.
Consent?
It's okay, Mayor, eight-five-one-four, we're gonna revisit that, correct? And then we consented to five-eight-one-five, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So we're on, uh, recommendation five-eight-one-six, do we have?
No for one-four, yes for one-five, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Do we have a consensus on five-eight-one-six? Yes, we do. Uh, recommendation five-eight point one-seven, do we have a consensus?
I had a couple grammar things.
Wait, before you do that, do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Okay, we do, go ahead.
Subparagraph I, if the owner installing, uh, the owner installing, uh, no, that was good, no, we're good there, I'm sorry. Um, in subsection Q, it says shall locate their facilities located in the path of construction. I thought facilities should be utilities used in that context, and then later on in the same subsection on page fifty-two at the top, at the discretion of the city, if facilities are impossible or extremely difficult to locate, I thought that should be utilities.
Is that a NAN question?
Yeah. Uh, well, city manager?
I don't, I would agree with, uh, Steve's take on the city's discretion needing more specificity, I do not have a problem with referencing facilities, because sometimes it involves a lot more infrastructure, it, it might be a six oh one, do you have any compelling reason why we should say it one way or the other?
I think facilities is just a little broader, maybe like the furnaces and. Go broad. It's not a specific utility, but.
Okay.
I think they can sort of be used in a changing room.
Sure.
Go broad or go home.
We're good. Page fifty-two, nothing, page fifty-three, item, uh, recommendation five-eight point one-eight, do we, we do not have a consensus? We do not. Uh, five-eight one-nine, do we have a consensus? We do. Five-eight two-zero, do we have a consensus? We do. Chapter sixty-two. Page fifty-four, recommendation six-two point zero-one, do we have a consensus? We do. Six-two point zero-two, do we have a consensus? We do. Six-two point zero-three, do we have a consensus? Okay, chapter sixty-six, recommendation six-six point zero-one, do we have a consensus? We do not. Six-six, recommendation six-six point zero-two, do we have a consensus? Dan?
Yes.
We do. Alright, we're on page fifty-six. Let's see, I like the electric car. Recommendation point, excuse me, six-six point zero-three, do we have a consensus?
I, I just think it might need a little discussion about that addition, but.
If you wanna have like a meaningful discussion, then I would say we don't have consensus, so it comes separate. Okay, so we do not have consensus? We're good, alright. Uh, recommendation six-six point zero-four, do we have consensus? We do. Chapter seventy, page fifty-seven. Um, let's see, recommendation seven-zero point one, zero, excuse me, point one? Point zero-one, how about that?
Yes.
Do we have a consensus? We do, okay. Recommendation seven-zero point zero-two, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point zero-three, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point zero-four, do we have a consensus? We do. Record, uh, page fifty-eight, recommendation seven zero point zero-five, do we have a, uh, consensus? We do. Uh, recommendation seven zero point zero-six, do we have a consensus? We do not. Okay.
There's the language I need to discuss, but it's longer than I can do now.
Okay, then we'll pull that out. Recommendation seven zero point zero-seven, do we have a consensus?
Hold on one second, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Zero-eight?
It's, uh, seven zero point zero-seven on page fifty-eight, bottom.
I'm okay.
Okay. We're on page, uh, fifty-nine. Uh, recommendation seventy point zero-eight, do we have a consensus? You notice I'm trying to change it up the way I'm reading to make it more interesting? Keep the audience enthralled in this. Page sixty, seventy point zero-nine, do we have a consensus? We do. Sixty-one, recommendation seventy point one zero, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point one-one. Do we have a consensus? This is almost where I could've said seven-eleven, but not quite. Alright, page sixty-two, recommendation seventy point one-two, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point one-three, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point one-four, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point one-five, do we have a consensus? We do, page sixty-two, sixty-three, excuse me. Uh, recommendation seventy point one-six, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point seventeen, see what I did there? Do we have a consensus?
Uh, just add the his/her, uh, director or his/her delegated representative.
Okay, so we all go with that?
We're doing his/her, so I'm not gonna.
His/her, we all go with that? His/her, and we have, uh, consensus. Okay, uh, recommendation seventy point eighteen. Do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation on page sixty-four, recommendation seventy point nineteen, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point twenty, do we have a consensus? We do. Page sixty-five. Recommendation seventy point twenty-one, do we have a consensus? We do. Uh, recommendation seven zero point two-two, do we have a consensus? We do. At the bottom of the page, recommendation seventy point twenty-three, do we have a consensus? Page sixty-six, recommendation seventy point twenty-four, do we have consensus? We do. Uh, recommendation seventy point twenty-five, do we have consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point twenty-six, do we have consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point twenty-seven, do we have consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point two-eight, do we have consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point two-nine, do we have consensus? We do. Page sixty-eight, uh, recommendation seventy point three zero, do we have consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point three-one, do we have consensus? Recommendation seventy point three-two, do we have consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point thirty-three, do we have consensus? Ninety-nine, recommendation seventy point thirty-four, do we have consensus? Ninety-nine, recommendation seventy point thirty-four, do we have consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point thirty-five, do we have consensus?
I have one language thing. One thousand dollars per day or by imprisonment in the county jail for not to exceed sixty days. Just, you can take out four.
Just the word four?
Yeah.
Or just reword that.
It doesn't stop, I promise. I tried and tried and tried.
It's sickness.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take a little while, isn't it, Tom?
In my defense.
It's gonna take a little while.
I was, I was.
Okay, do we have a consensus with that amendment?
That was Mayor seventy thirty-five?
That was seventy, seventy point thirty-five, that's correct.
I'm sorry, I was stuck on seventy thirty-four where there was a missed typo. I'm talking about.
I like it.
Read the title again. Update storm sewer definition to reflect water bodes.
I thought that was a term of art that was used.
I didn't look at it.
All right, moving on. Recommendation seventy point thirty-six, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point thirty-seven, do we have a consensus? Outstanding. Page seventy. Recommendation seventy point thirty-eight, do we have a consensus? We do. Recommendation seventy point thirty-nine, do we have a consensus? Recommendation seventy point forty, do we have a consensus? Very good. This next one I'm gonna read by title only, no, I'm just kidding. I couldn't help it. All right, page seventy-one, recommendation seven-zero point four one, do we have a consensus? We do. And finally, last but not least, recommendation seven-zero point four two, do we have a consensus? Outstanding. Good job, give yourself a round of applause. Really quite impressed, frankly. All right, so I think that probably gives us an awful lot of ordinance, ordinances to start with. Did anybody count those up? No? No, I'm gonna say it's more than three, so we got our work cut out for us.
You do like a no more than three on.
Well, and I think, I think that that's kind of the approach, Tom and I discussed it. And I think we limit it to three because, you know, it is a reading, it takes time, even if there's no debate on it, there might, you know, and who knows, maybe it's an ordinance that's being modified that to us there's not an issue with, but maybe it adds to the agenda where there's public comment on it. And because something we did not think of. And so that process will be able to take place.
Well, and as I pointed out too, there's multiple things changing in, in almost the same section to where those would all get lumped together. So as many as recommendations as we approve will actually whittle down to less.
It will, yeah, it will, it will.
Still be a lot.
All right, well, listen, once again, let me thank the ordinance review committee. I hope they feel that we're doing their recommendations justice. This exercise we went through was kind of a way to get the ball rolling and do it as efficiently as possible and still setting aside anything that requires some discussion. So I hope everyone feels good about that. Any comments? Councilmember?
Mayor, do you have a recommendation or an idea of how we should revisit the ones in which we've had no consensus?
Is they'll be added to the agenda, they'll come after the fact unless it's, in other words, after we've gone through the ones we do have consensus on, then they'll start appearing. And I would assume we'll just do them in the, in the way that they're numbered in the book. Unless, unless there is something the city manager wishes to have come forward beforehand. City attorney, anything to add to that?
The way I think that I'd, I'd like to approach the ordinances so that we don't have five hundred of them because we're supposed to do these ordinances in what we call a single subject. And so I think that if we could do them by chapter, we could maybe limit it to the chapter of like, for example, Parks and Recreation, that would be a single issue. Unfortunately, in that particular chapter, there was some issues that you had with a couple of them. I'd like to bring them all as Parks and Recreation ordinances as in one. And it may have twenty recommendations, one or two of them which you want to discuss a little bit further. The reason I'm suggesting that is, is that we save a lot of money if we can advertise fewer ordinances. It's, and I don't know the exact cost, but seven or eight hundred dollars probably for each notice that we advertise. So every ordinance, we have that cost. So, I mean, if you want me to do it differently than that, to pull those out of there.
So for clarification, so we'll use parks, or excuse me, leisure services. Dated myself there. Leisure services as an example. So are you, are you suggesting that you would come with all of?
One ordinance that would have all of those code sections that have been recommended for approval.
So all of the changes that we just did by consensus in leisure services in that chapter would be one ordinance?
Correct.
All right, so it's simply, it's just a matter of the length of reading it?
Just the title is gonna be what I'm gonna read.
Title only, and you, well, that's what I was asking earlier, whether or not it had to be, oh, that, I think that's right.
And he can point out which items within, or just for reference of what may need discussion or, you know, to remember what, what the sticking points were, right?
The staff memo that'll be attached to it, that'll say we had, you had consensus on all of these items except for
Section.
Section forty-two dash twelve, forty-two dash eighteen, you know, and then you can focus on those.
All within one meeting?
Yeah, it'd be one ordinance, all of those would be within, and so that would still leave us like thirty ordinances to do, even if I do them by chapter.
You know, the only one that's gonna be big is leisure services and.
Yeah, well, why don't we do this? I mean, why don't, why don't we start with the smaller chapters? I think that's probably, in the meantime, we can like tally up.
Whatever's pressing.
Precis, whatever's pressing, that we could tally up what the numbers look like for the others. Because what you're potentially saying, if I understand you correctly, is saying, okay, here's one ordinance by title only, right, which makes all of the changes that we have accepted and also those that are proposed that we want to debate. So in that one meeting, we, we may end up debating fifteen ordinances?
No, it's, it's gonna be one long ordinance for chapter, one chapter of leisure services. But there were a lot of requested changes in it, so it's only gonna be one ordinance. So on, on those meetings, the ordinances are gonna be a little lengthy, maybe we only read two instead of four ordinances or five ordinances that night. But I, I don't think it's a good use of your time to do two-thirds of leisure services, and then in a month from there, on the ones that you want further discussion on, come back and revise it again. I, I think it just makes more sense to do it all at one time for that one chapter. It's just gonna require, you know, you to discuss those two or three items that you had an issue with today that you wanted to address. And then if there are changes, or if you want to make deletions from that ordinance, we will do that by the second reading. And so we'll have, you'll have the opportunity to, for your input and the public's input to make additional changes.
The number of notices for publication would be reduced to the number of chapters.
Basically.
City manager?
Just for clarification, Tom, we're talking about per chapter, not per department, no matter how many chapters are involved, correct?
Per chapter, I think that as long as I can stick with one.
Okay. Two, there is legislative help being considered on that front, but I appreciate Tom's point about the cost. There's a digital, there's legislation considering digital advertising, but I don't think it's gonna get as far as it needs to for that to help us, so I think his point about economics is very good. And my third point was that there's a hundred and thirty-one of them today, that there is consensus on.
Recommendations.
Right, but.
Twenty chapters that have a change.
For example, chapter forty-two is gonna be.
Right.
Because apparently not only does it start in parks, it stays there for a while. Sorry.
Who, who, by the way, who brought all those recommendations to the? Yeah, for leisure services? Who was it who did that?
I just. Confirm it wasn't me, I, I can't confirm who it was. It wasn't, it wasn't Vice Mayor or myself.
Yeah, okay. Just checking, I just wondered if there was a director involved.
We had consensus on everything that I brought up.
All right. Well, I guess, so you know, I will deal with it, I mean, we don't, you know, look, it's, let's not kid ourselves, this is a process that's supposed to take place every five years, it has not. So unfortunately, like with some of our infrastructure, this council is being forced to deal with the bills. I mean, that's just the reality. I, I don't know how well that works in terms of us pulling out, if I understand you clearly, if there are forty-two changes within chapter forty-two and fifteen of them are debatable. So we would have it on one agenda, and so we would then say, item forty-two, section forty-two point twenty-three was one of them, so let's pull that out and debate this now. And then we keep doing that till we get through all fifteen.
All right, and you may say, okay, I want to tweak that to read as follows. And then when it comes back the second reading, that will be tweaked that way, or you may decide you don't have a problem, or.
Right, no, I understand that part of it. Okay, well, we'll, we will figure it out, it's gonna make for some.
Long meetings.
Long meetings, but we'll work it. We'll get it done, we'll get it done, as long as we apply the rules to the new councilman, I think we'll be all right. All right, any other comments, questions? All right, thank you all very much for your hard work, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of it.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to second, doesn't require a vote, we're adjourned.